I have 6:30. I am calling the meeting to order. St. Louis County Council Meeting, Tuesday, January 19, 2021. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? My pledge of allegiance...
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States...
The United States of America.
America and to the Republic...
...which it stands.
One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair. Councilmember Days?
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Present.
Councilmember Fitch?
Here.
Councilmember Webb?
Here.
Councilmember Clancy?
Here.
Councilmember Tracus?
Present.
Councilmember Harder?
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Days.
One second. One second, just one second, please. We're going to go to the approval of the Journal right now, and I'm going to hold that. We received the Journal pretty late, and so we need an opportunity to look at that. So we will hold the approval of the Journal until the next meeting.
Point of order, please, Councilwoman Days.
Just a minute. Councilwoman Clancy, you wish to be recognized?
Yes, I would.
Please, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Before proceeding, I'd like to provide a statement for the record. As we are all aware, there is an ongoing dispute about who is Chair of the St. Louis County Council. I have heeded the advice of our Counselor's Office, who maintains that, according to the Charter, I am the Chair and Councilwoman Tracus is the Vice Chair of the Council. However, Councilwoman Days believes that she is the Chair of the Council and that Councilwoman Harder is the Vice Chair. We can't function with this kind of dispute, with two members of this body claiming to be Chair and Vice Chair. The issue is now in the hands of judges, and I want to make clear that I will adhere to the interpretation of the Court when it comes. Earlier this afternoon, Councilwoman Days, as you're aware, I reached out to you and we had a conversation, and I shared what I am sharing now, as well as my intent to make a statement tonight. I shared my desire to proceed as Chair and asked Councilwoman Days her thoughts about how to make sure the meeting can run smoothly tonight. Councilwoman Days shared her intent to run the meeting as Chair. In the meantime, Councilwoman Days, if it is your will to preside over tonight's meeting, so be it. I do, however, want the record to reflect my objection to this action. But in the meantime, we must also get on with our business to the best of our ability until the judge makes their ruling over the matter. So let's proceed.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, continue.
We're moving on to bid openings?
Yes. We have no bid openings this evening, so we will move to communications. Madam Chair?
Madam Chair, we...
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay. Madam Chair, we have no tax compromises this evening, so we'll move to zoning matters. Under zoning matters, item number one, Fourth District.
Received and filed. So ordered.
Moving on to road and bridge matters. Item number one, all districts.
Received and filed, and that will be the order.
Moving on to other communications. Item number one.
Received and filed, that will be the same motion to item number five, and that will be the order.
Item number six.
Received, filed, and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number seven.
Received, filed, and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Item number eight.
Received and filed, and that will be the order.
Item number nine.
Received, filed, and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 10, Sixth District.
Received, filed, hold on the order of business. Same motion for item number 11.
So ordered.
Item number 12.
Received, filed, and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 13, Second District.
Received, filed, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 14, Third District.
Received, filed, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and same motion for item number 15.
So ordered.
Item number 16, Fifth District.
Received, filed, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion through item number 19.
So ordered.
One moment, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Item number 26, District.
Received, filed, and the item be referred to Councilwoman Clancy and the county counselor.
So ordered.
Thank you. Moving on to item 21, Seventh District.
Received, filed, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. For item 22 as well.
So ordered.
Item number 23.
Received, filed, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 24.
Received, filed, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 25.
Received, filed...
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, can I interrupt you for just a moment on other communication 25? I believe that the motion that is requested, if you are willing, is to receive file and extend the contract with Richard Brunk as requested on a month-to-month basis.
Okay, we need to make that amendment then on there, please.
And I apologize.
Received, filed, and extend contract with Richard Brunk as requested on a month-to-month basis. Is that correct? Genevieve, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. And we will receive file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation for that as well, and that will be the order.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Moving on to item number 26.
Received, filed, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 27.
Received, filed, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 28.
Received, filed, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 29, First, Second, Third, Fifth, and Sixth Districts.
Received, filed, contract in an amount not to exceed $477,943.28 be approved and awarded to Gershison Construction Company Incorporated, the lowest responsive bidder as recommended, and authorization for revision to the existing traffic control devices be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries.
Item number 30, First District.
Received, filed, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 31, Second District.
Received, filed, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 32, Sixth District.
Received, filed, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, please.
So ordered.
Item number 33, Seventh District.
Received, filed, and the county counselor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 34.
Received and filed, and that will be the order. We have the report of the county executive.
Good evening, everyone. Tomorrow, we officially enter a new chapter in our country with new leadership in Washington. With the new administration prioritizing vaccine distribution and making decisions based on the grim realities of this pandemic, local governments feel like they finally have a true partner in curbing this virus. Vaccine rollout that began last month is ramping up, and the desire to get shot in the arm is understandably strong. More than 200,000 people have pre-registered through the St. Louis County Department of Public Health's website, pre-registered to be notified when it's their turn in line, based on eligibility. Every day, thousands of people across the country continue to test positive for COVID-19. Getting a vaccine is a race against time. On Monday, DPH administered the final doses of the country's first shipment from the state. We were able to give 1,154 shots of the vaccine. We had received 975 doses in our initial allotment, but that amount actually allowed for a slightly higher number of doses to be administered. Today, we received another 3,900 doses from the state, and we'll be giving those shots tomorrow to those who pre-registered and are eligible. We urge people to be honest when pre-registering and think about those who you could be bumping from line. The state outlined its tier system last week, and we are adhering to that system. But for the system to work correctly and get the shots to those who need them most, we need everyone to be honest about their demographics and their employment information. Our Department of Public Health is using this information to determine what phase or tier each person who pre-registers belongs in. We have seen some instances where those who say they are health care workers are not. Others have brought their spouses or family members along who are not yet eligible for the vaccine. And we've had high school students show up for appointments who misrepresented who they were on the form. This has not been a huge problem, but as the availability in vaccine increases, those who show up who should not be in line will ultimately slow down the process. And that can elevate tensions and deprive a vaccine to our most vulnerable, those most likely to have severe outcomes if infected by the virus. Our health department workers should not be distracted by this and should not be put in a position to turn someone away because they are not following the rules. As vaccine distribution moves from health care workers and nursing homes to a greater population, we are committed to getting this life-saving shot to those who have historically been underserved and disproportionately impacted by the pandemic. We need everyone in this honor system to be honorable. And we will get to everyone, but we urge patience. For months, the health department has been working with hospital systems and the state to prepare for mass vaccine distribution when the supply chain increases. When we receive federal funds through the state and more vaccine doses, we are positioned to expand our efforts. We are aggressively working with community partners to open a variety of vaccine distribution sites across St. Louis County. We want to make it as accessible as possible for as many people as possible. We are in the process of selecting our first mass vaccination site, which will be in North County, where the virus hit early and hard. We are looking at several sites, keeping in mind it must be a location to easily social distance inside while people are getting the shot and during the 30-minute observation period afterward. And with the Pfizer vaccine, we must make sure that we have a spot where the vials can be kept at a very specific temperature. And the site must be one that is secure. We do not want the site to be one where people are waiting outside during the St. Louis winter either. With the weather and the strong recommendations from the CDC and the vaccine manufacturer that those who receive a shot be observed for an adverse reaction, we are in the position of waiting a bit longer to create drive-up sites. Meanwhile, the Department of Health is expanding its clinical hours with the expectation of an increased supply of vaccine. And we are working to make sure those who use our clinics for other health issues will continue to receive services, and the logistics of all of that are underway right now. It is critically important that disruption to service for our clients is at a minimum. And we are doing all we can to be ready when the vaccine supply expands so we can get as many people protected from this virus as possible. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, county executive. Madam Clerk, I don't think we have any special reports. Is that correct? And we will move to public forum.
That is correct, Madam Chair. We will move to public forum.
And how many speakers do we have this evening?
We have 16 speakers this evening.
All right. When your name is called, would you please announce yourself? The clerk will let you know when to begin speaking. Say your name, first name and last name, and your zip code for the record, please. The clerk will also inform you when your three minutes are up. This is a very important part of our meetings, and we really welcome the public to participate in this area. So Madam Clerk, if you will start and call our first person.
Yes, our first speaker this evening is Nick Kasoff, followed by, and I don't have a first name, I just have the initial B, as in boy, Truitt. Mr. Kasoff?
It is now two weeks since the coup in St. Louis County, and because of the relentless disrespect for the will of the voters clearly expressed in the November elections, the cost to our residents continues to increase. After the debacle of the Stinger administration, I was hopeful that county government would get better with new leadership. Sadly, it is more of the same. A county executive who ruthlessly executes the power of his office without regard for the good of the people he was elected to serve, and an enabling faction on county council willing to prop him up at any cost. All we need now is a visit from the U.S. Attorney's Office, and it will be a rerun of the previous administration. There are only two people who can stop this mockery of the taxpayers and voters of this county, Sam Page and Lisa Clancy. Though you may drag it out with specious legal arguments, we all know the right thing to do here. For 2021, Shalonda Webb is the council representative for the Fourth District, and the vote for 2021 leadership belonged to her. Ms. Walton, with all the benefits of an incumbent, barely got a third of the vote in that election. And by your unlawful action, you have spit on the voters of the Fourth District, substituting your own desire for power and disregarding their will for change. Tonight, Mr. Page asked everyone to be honorable about getting the vaccine. I'm asking that he do the same for his governing. Tonight, I call on Mr. Page to put an end to this coup. With a word, Mr. Page could ask Ms. Clancy to withdraw her claim, direct the county counselor to drop the lawsuit, and this council could move forward for the good of its citizens according to the will of the voters in compliance with our county charter and state law. Every day you fail to do this, Mr. Page, it is costing us dearly. In the end, if you don't quickly do the right thing, you can be sure that the voters will have their say. Please, for the good of our county, do not let it come to that. Tonight, declare your support for the voters of this county and of the Fourth District and end your coup. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is B. Truitt, followed by Suzanne Burley. B. Truitt? Are you there?
Perhaps we can reach out to, I hope it's Ms. Truitt. Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am. We will do that.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Suzanne Burley, followed by Renee Artman.
Okay, Suzanne Burley, 63123. Last week, I had, or two weeks ago, I had planned to congratulate Councilwoman Shalonda Webb. So congratulations. I'm very grateful to have you join the council. And although it's only been a short time, I'm already very impressed. Last week was quite a turbulent meeting, but I have to say how proud I was of those that are standing for what is right and fair. Watching Councilwoman Harder and Fitch work together with Councilwoman Days and Webb is what I would expect from elected officials who are doing their job with all of the St. Louis County residents in the forefront of their minds. As for Councilwoman Tracus and Councilwoman Clancy, it was so very disappointing to see grown adults that have been given this platform and this opportunity turn into such unprofessional representatives. What industry or business environment would be accepting of name-calling, shouting, or even eye-rolling? What part of that behavior is representative of those in your district? I do not support the former chairwoman attempting to manipulate the situation we are in. Her attempted power grab is blatantly obvious. Why wasn't the date of the first meeting changed to include Councilwoman Webb? It cannot be said that we weren't aware. Councilwoman Harder suggested at the December 22 meeting that the first meeting of the year be held on January 12th, but he was very quickly shut down. Clancy wants us to believe that the date couldn't be changed and that she really didn't want it to happen that way, but that she was forced to because of the Charter. I think we all know better. And now, without my consent, my tax dollars are being used for the former chairwoman to fight to keep a title that is no longer hers. It is time for all council members to congratulate Ms. Rita Days and Mr. Mark Harder as the Chair and co-chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Renee Artman, followed by Carla Valenti.
Artman, 63026, and I am Chair of the Republican Central Committee of St. Louis County. I want to express my support for Councilwoman Harder, Fitch, and the other members of the council who have sought to restore the rule of law to the county council. And Lisa Clancy's actions trying to unlawfully elect herself to a second term as council chair is a slap in the face to all St. Louis County citizens. This is especially so for Councilwoman Shalonda Webb and her constituents in North County as she was excluded from voting on new officers. Councilwoman Clancy has continuously claimed she was following the Charter all the while breaking it. The fairest thing to have done was to have postponed the election for Chair and Vice Chair until the second meeting in January after the new council members had been sworn in, which is what's suggested by Councilwoman Harder on January 5th council meeting. However, doing that would have created a chance that she would not have been re-elected as Chair. So she tried to get re-elected by going the underhanded and dishonest route. As a Post-Dispatch editorial put it, "Democracy was subverted." Because of these actions of Lisa Clancy, the county council is now having to go to court, and judges will decide on how this mess is going to get cleaned up. Another waste of the taxpayers' money. When the debt finally settles, I hope the council can get on with the important business of St. Louis County. There is so much to do. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carla Valenti, followed by Elizabeth Cohen.
Okay, Carla Valenti, my zip code 63040. And I want to start by saying I agree with the speakers that have come before me 100%. I want to thank you, Madam Chairperson, Rita Days, councilmembers Mark Harder, Tim Fitch, and Shalonda Webb for putting St. Louis County residents first. We appreciate everything you've done and will continue to do for your residents. All of you have impressed me with your willingness to work together. County Executive Sam Page, councilmembers Clancy, Tracus, and Dunaway need to stand down and join your peers in working together to accomplish what is needed. The chaos must end. All kids need to be in school full-time. Businesses need to open. Vaccines need to be distributed, and life needs to continue. Please withdraw your lawsuit and put an end to this power grab. Chairperson Clancy, your time has come to an end. Let Rita Days do her job. She seems like a very capable chairwoman. I have complete faith in Chairperson Days, Harder, Fitch, and Webb. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Elizabeth Cohen, followed by Sean McDonough.
Elizabeth Cohen, 63005. I want to begin by thanking councilmembers Fitch, Days, Webb, and Harder for stopping Lisa Clancy from denying newly-elected Councilwoman Webb the right to vote on the council leadership under which she will work. I look forward to more bipartisan action by this county council in the years to come. Although there are many topics that weigh on my mind, I'm going to focus on the mandate that is forcing our children to wear masks while playing sports, as well as the mandate for everyone to wear a mask while working out at local gyms. One thing we should learn from this pandemic is that you can't abuse your body and then expect it to perform properly. According to the CDC, there's a long list of health issues that are considered risk factors for severe illness from the virus that causes COVID. This list of health issues includes heart and lung disease, along with obesity, diabetes, high blood pressure, and many others. Luckily, it is a scientific fact that exercise improves our health. Aerobic exercise is exercise that requires pumping of oxygenated blood by the heart to deliver oxygen to working muscles. According to the Mayo Clinic, there are many benefits of aerobic exercise, including losing weight and keeping it off, increased heart and lung fitness, and bone and muscle strength over time, warding off viral illness, but that one's sinking, reduces health risk of many conditions including obesity, heart disease, high blood pressure, diabetes, stroke, metabolic disease, and even certain types of cancer. It strengthens your heart, it keeps your arteries clear, it helps ease depression and anxiety, which we know are at a high during this pandemic, and it actually, you have a lower risk of dying of all causes. Remember the risk factors for severe illness from COVID? How many of them did I just list as things that can be improved or even eliminated by aerobic exercise? Working out and playing sports are great sources of aerobic, health-improving exercise. Wearing a mask while getting your heart rate up is difficult at a minimum and dangerous at its worst. Mask mandates are actually deterring people from going to gyms and playing sports. The mandates are stopping people from doing one thing they can do to make a big difference in their own personal health and ultimately protecting the health of our entire community. These mandates are not based on science that tells us how to keep ourselves healthy. So I ask you all, be the leaders our county needs. Promote good health, follow the science, let us play and work out while breathing in fresh air, and the sports and gym mask mandates. And I have one more thing to say, if I have a moment, is that the virtual comments that you guys started not long ago clearly doesn't work. It is limited, I see people not being able to connect. It has actually silenced the voice of the people in the community. So I really recommend you go back to email comments unless you're prepared to go back to in-person meetings. Thank you for your time and all your work.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sean McDonough. Our next speaker is Sean McDonough, followed by Josh Share.
Yes, hello, this is Sean McDonough, 63021, and to respect the council member's time, please carry on, I am simply listening in. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker, Josh Share, Share, I think it is.
Hello, Diane, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Please proceed.
Great, thank you very much. I don't think I can disagree with any caller that's called in before me, so I want to second the sentiments of everyone else who's called in. But I also want to congratulate Ms. Days for her chairwoman position, and Mr. Harder for his VP Chairman position. In addition, I also want to thank my representative, Tim Fitch, and also Shalonda Webb. Congratulations on your position as well, and thank you for standing up for what is right, for the positions that you're currently in today. So thank you very much. I also just want to say to Lisa Clancy and the rest of the council members, to use our tax dollars to sue other members of the council is absolutely appalling. I assume if that continues to go on, that we would get a discount on our property taxes moving forward, especially if you should lose that lawsuit. If you want to sue somebody, feel free, this is America, but to use our, my money, and the rest of the county's money to do that is absolutely appalling. Thank you very much for the Fab Four, keep fighting the good fight, you have thousands backing you up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Shannon Robinson, followed by Nancy Rorden. Ms. Robinson?
I'd like to open with a quote I read the other day. It says, "Don't give up hope for goodness in the world. Protect the kindness in your heart. Stay firm in your desire for truth and justice. Rest well so that when the time comes, you can stand up for your principles with integrity and compassion. And when you look back on your life, you can have a clear conscience knowing that you did all you could to live with honor and righteousness." I want to personally thank Councilwoman Webb and Councilwoman Days, Councilman Harder and Councilman Fitch for showing St. Louis County what it means to stand up for your principles with integrity and honor. You four are coming together to help the citizens of St. Louis County, all of the citizens of St. Louis County, not just some of them. Thank you for your dedication to us, to our businesses, and to our children. I truly believe we are in the fight of our lives for the soul of the county. Stay firm in your desire for truth and justice. You have thousands who are watching and supporting you. Thank you all for your service.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nancy Rorden, followed by Johanna Bodine. Ms. Rorden?
I just wanted to say how impressed I am with Councilwoman Rita Hurd Days, Councilwoman Shalonda Webb, Councilman Mark Harder, and Councilman Tim Fitch for standing up and doing the right thing. The newly-elected council people have always taken part in the vote for their chairperson for the year. That is the precedent. Instead of following precedent, other people saw an opportunity to protect their power base. There are so many excuses, but they are just that, excuses, smoke and mirrors for a deliberate plan to protect the current leadership. That is not what democracy is about. I am so hopeful in a county council with these four amazing people taking leadership and trying to find common ground for the good of St. Louis County. It is so important that the legislative branch is not just a rubber stamp for the county executive. St. Louis knows the consequences of the lack of oversight. Must we continue to make the same mistakes over and over again? We need thoughtful, independent representation to really examine each issue, not just partisan politics as usual. We need this new representation on the St. Louis County Council to build a brighter future together. We also need to return to in-person meetings or to emailed comments. I have tried to help so many people who want to connect with the county council and have their voice heard, and the technology is just cumbersome, and it really serves to silence the voices. Just want to make sure that we're hearing that. I want to again thank these people, these wonderful, fabulous four people. We know that you will not agree on every issue, and that's okay. You're working so hard to represent your constituents and have an authentic voice, and we just appreciate your willingness to work together on some. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Johanna Bodine, followed by Stacy Camerer.
Hi, good evening, this is Johanna Bodine, 63005. I wanted to just start out by saying, I thank you so much to Rita Days, Mark Harder, Tim Fitch, and Shalonda Webb, and congratulations, Ms. Webb, on your recent election win. Thank you all for standing up for St. Louis County constituents. I agree with everything that's been said. It is so important that you represent the people who elected you and not your own agendas, the way some on the council feel is necessary. It will serve you well in the long run. I also did want to ask the council if there was anything that they could do to revisit some of the Health Department restrictions and realign with the CDC and state Missouri guidelines as it relates to close contact and quarantines in our schools. I know that their ultimate decision related to these policies lies with the school districts, but if you can be strong leaders and eliminate some of the confusion that exists today, it will benefit our students who have really suffered for nearly a year now. It's very, very sad that some districts aren't able to do in-person school, that children are constantly quarantined even though they aren't ill and no one in their family is ill and frankly never become ill. Students who have missed three weeks of school in a row because they were close contact with someone and clearly did not exhibit any symptoms. The methods need to change so that we really can get on with our lives, and businesses need to be able to reopen. We've really damaged our economy, and even cities like New York and Chicago are finally seeing this and realizing this. So come on, St. Louis County, let's get this together. And Sam Page, I just want to praise you for your self-awareness this evening, that you, in fact, who are acting county executive and not a full-time healthcare worker, stepped in front of other residents of the county who could have received the vaccine before you. So I recognize that you were actually speaking to yourself this morning in your news conference, and we all appreciate what, I guess, better late than ever.
Then Chair, that's three minutes. Our next speaker is Stacy Camerer, followed by Amanda Garavaglia.
I'd like to just start off by saying to Dr. Page to stop blaming the public for the issues that you don't have any proof about. It started when this pandemic started with kids' sports and blaming them for numbers that you never showed us, then it went to restaurants, and now, now you're blaming teenagers for showing up to vaccine appointments, and that's the best that we can do? You even admitted at your news conference and then tonight that it's not really a big problem. Well then, why are we talking about it? Clearly you feel necessary to blame others for your poor vaccine protocol, that you have been spending lots of money and have had months and months and months to plan. This has kind of been your model of operation throughout this whole pandemic. Where's your accountability? It's nonexistent. All you want to do is blame others. And then, going on to Lisa Clancy, I am not quite sure what you've been promised from Sam Page, but you might want to look around at the current political image that you have and think about what's going to happen to you when he no longer has use for you, because pretty much everywhere in all of the newspapers, social media, that political image is not looking very hot right now. And I just want to say, welcome, Shalonda Webb, thank you, Rita Days, thank you, Tim Fitch, and thank you, Mark Harder, for your hard work. Let's do this for St. Louis County.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Amanda Garavaglia, followed by Blaine Smotherson.
I wanted to start off by thanking Mrs. Webb for coming out to North County and handing out toiletries and food. To see a council member out doing that is amazing to me, because I participate every two weeks about now in South County in food drives, and this past Friday, we gave out over 600 boxes of food in South County alone. I have never seen Sam Page get out in the community and do anything like this without having to have a newspaper person there or without having to have the news there. So, Mrs. Webb, I just want to thank you for doing that, and I want to congratulate you. It's just wonderful to see somebody else out there helping the community, because there are so many out there that cannot work right now. And I think that with the four of you, with Tim Fitch, you, Mrs. Webb, Rita Days, and Mark Harder, I think with you guys, on our side, we can get St. Louisans back to work. We really need to get them back to work. They want to go back to work. They don't want to be in those food lines, trust me. They don't want to be asking for food. They don't. If you see those people and they got kids in the back of their car, do you know how hard it is to pull up and put food in their car? You want to hug them, but we can't even give them a hug. We can send them away with a "God bless you," when in reality, all they want to do is go back to work. We need to open back up. And at the end of this, are we going to get a tax break for this lawsuit that you and Lisa Clancy and Dunaway and Trachis are doing? That's the only other question I have tonight, is I don't think we should have to pay property taxes, because you're using our money for this really unnecessary lawsuit. So, I mean, really, for an unnecessary lawsuit with our money that we all need for people that aren't working? So really, that's all I have to say is, where's our money? Thank you. Congratulations, Mrs. Webb.
Our next speaker is Blaine Smotherson, followed by Jason Moore.
My name is Blaine Smotherson, 63130, but I'm also proud to say that I'm Third Ward Councilman in University City, and I'd like to first of all start off and say that I want to thank Ms. Rita Days for standing respectfully during this challenging time. I want to congratulate Ms. Webb for her election to the board, and also thank for the support of councilmembers Harder and Fitch. I want to actually direct this to Ms. Lisa Clancy, and I actually wanted to read something from her website, and I wanted to say this very quickly, and that is, during post-Katrina Newall and she taught, which for Teach America, as a member in her special education classroom, Lisa saw firsthand how her low-income students and their families needed strong advocates, both in the classroom and in their communities. What I want to say to you, Ms. Clancy, is that the advocates for my ward, the advocates for District 1, and the strong advocate for District 4 is Ms. Shalonda Webb and Ms. Rita Days, and we need those advocates to have equal and fair opportunities on this board and given the chance to succeed. I also want to read one more last statement, and this is again from Ms. Clancy's word on her website, and it says, "As Director of Gladiator Consulting, partnering with nonprofit organizations and other change agents to solve problems, embrace collaboration, achieve greater impact, and reimagine St. Louis community that is equitable for all." Equitable means that the first District, District 1 and District 4 have not had that chair representation in six years. That does not sound equitable to me. So my last statement is, please remove the lawsuit, respect the new council vote, and also either rewrite your online message or reintroduce yourself to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jason Moore, followed by Sarah Meyer.
Good evening tonight, everybody. First off, I want to thank the Fab Four, it's been a long day, I was actually out in Jeff City today talking up to a Senate Committee to hopefully get improved language into a couple of bills for eventual passage or just elimination for even better bills. And it's fascinating that as part of those conversations, that county executive Sam Page came up at least two or three or four, maybe even four times, as not providing answers with all the metrics that is behind his reasonings to keep everything shut down to the way he has kept things shut down. I want to know why those numbers and those explanations have not been applied to the Senate, and specific senators, Senator Bob Onder. That was quite shocking to hear that in that chamber. As for Mr. Trachis and Ms. Clancy, I would like for you to please drop this frivolous lawsuit. Words fail me with how disgusted I am hearing that you guys went on ahead and did this. It's a waste of tax dollars money, and it's nothing but sour grapes, and it's not the kind of sour grapes that make wine, it's vinegar and the bitterest kind. Enough of the child games, this is adults. We need to start acting like it, because we in the county expect better, and our taxes aren't going down anytime soon, I'm quite confident, and yet we're paying for this type of behavior. Enough's enough. So Chairwoman Days, I saw your picture in the 2008 roster in the Capitol Building, and I ask you, please don't lose that experience in guiding yourself and the council down the proper path of temperament and good leadership. It's going to be very refreshing seeing a more professional and guided type of leadership instead of what we have seen so far. So thanks again, everybody. Everybody have a wonderful night and God bless.
Thank you. Our final speaker this evening is Sarah Meyer.
Okay, this is Sarah Meyer, I'm a resident of 63129. I wanted to start by voicing my admiration and support of the bipartisan majority of our council members. Thank you to Chairwoman Days, Vice Chair Harder, Ms. Webb, and Mr. Fitch for reaching across the aisle and supporting all citizens of St. Louis County. Kudos to you all for standing up against blatant manipulation, desperate legal challenges, and quite frankly, a complete lack of ethical leadership and common sense. To Ms. Clancy, Ms. Dunaway, Mr. Trachis, and Ms. Orwick, the the dysfunction you've taken part in while you attempt to retain power and fuel your own agendas is shameful at best. Your constituents deserve better and St. Louis County deserves better. As a resident of Mr. Trachis's district, I would also like to specifically take the opportunity to express my disappointment in his conduct of late and also to question why he's remaining not just complacent, but a willing participant in the corruption and deceit that's happening right in front of him. I'd like to end by quoting a portion of a recent editorial in the Post-Dispatch. It states, "To not recognize the subsequent election of Days and Harder as Chair and Vice Chair is political gamesmanship that denies newly elected officials the right to vote on council leadership under which they will work. This is not the way to welcome new members to this legislative body, and it's a disservice to St. Louis County residents." Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Madam Chair, that's all the public speakers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and would you proceed, uh, to the, um, introduction of bills?
Yes, ma'am. Bill number nine, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance authorizing the County Executive to execute a contract with Alliant Insurance Services, Inc., for the provision of benefits consulting services for St. Louis County. Bill number 10, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance authorizing the County Executive to accept grant funds totaling an amount of up to $9,781,735 from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, Office of Community Planning and Development, appropriating said grant funds for support of various Department of Human Services programs, and authorizing the Director of the Department of Human Services to execute necessary documents. Bill number 11, introduced by Councilmember Days, an ordinance authorizing the County Executive to grant a permanent easement and a temporary construction easement on, over, and under two tracts of county-owned land located in St. Vincent Park to the Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District, appropriating funds received as compensation for the granting of said easements and authorizing the County Executive and Director of Parks and Recreation to execute necessary documents. Bill number 12, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance authorizing the County Executive to grant a permanent easement on, over, and under a tract of county-owned land located in Mathilda Park to the Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District and authorizing the County Executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number 13, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance authorizing the County Executive to accept a grant of up to $100,000 from the Office of National Drug Control Policy, appropriating said grant funds for support of a police detective position in the Bureau of Drug Enforcement assigned to the Multi-Jurisdictional Drug Task Force and authorizing the County Executive and Superintendent of Police to execute necessary documents. Bill number 14, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance authorizing the County Executive to execute a contract with Maxim Healthcare Staffing Services, Inc., for the provision of psychiatry services at clinics operated by the Department of Public Health. Bill number 15, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance authorizing the County Executive to execute a contract with Jackson and Coker Locum Tenens LLC for the provision of psychiatric or psychiatry services at clinics operated by the Department of Public Health. Bill number 16, introduced by Councilmember Trachis, an ordinance authorizing the County Executive to execute a contract with Horner and Schifrin, Inc., for engineering services related to replacement of Buckley Road Bridge number 528 and the adjacent pedestrian bridge number 528-P-C-R-1772. Bill number 17, introduced by Councilmember Trachis, an ordinance declaring the public necessity of and providing for the replacement of Merrimack Bottom Road Bridge number 509 and the opening, widening, and establishing of a section of public road designated as Merrimack Bottom Road, lying wholly within unincorporated St. Louis County, Missouri, directing and authorizing the acquisition of real property therefor and authorizing execution of contracts, agreements, and related documents, CR-1723. Bill number 18, introduced by Councilmember Harder, an ordinance authorizing the County Executive to execute an agreement with Metro West Fire Protection District for the installation, operation, and maintenance of a priority control signal system at 11 county-owned and maintained traffic signals. Bill number 20, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance amending Chapter 107 Title I, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances, 1974, as amended, purchasing by enacting new sections 107.500, 107.510, 107.515, 107.520, 107.530, 107.540, 107.550, 107.560, 107.570, 107.580, 107.605, 107.615, 107.620, 107.625, 107.630, 107.635, 107.640, 107.645, 107.650, 107.655, 107.660, 107.665, 107.670, and 107.680, all pertaining to the St. Louis County Prevailing Wage Compliance Program. Bill number 21, introduced by Councilmember Harder, an ordinance amending Chapter 503 Title V, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances, 1974, as amended, Board of Equalization by repealing and reenacting Sections 503.010, 503.020, 503.030, 503.040, 503.050, and 503.070, pertaining to establishment of an additional Board of Equalization. Bill number 22, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance authorizing and directing the issuance, sale, and delivery of general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2021 of St. Louis County, Missouri, prescribing the forms and details of the bonds and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith. Bill number 23, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance authorizing and directing the issuance, sale, and delivery of taxable special obligation refunding bonds, Series 2021A of St. Louis County, Missouri, prescribing the forms and details of the bonds and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith. Bill number 24, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance authorizing and directing the issuance, sale, and delivery of special obligation bonds, Series 2021B of St. Louis County, Missouri, prescribing the forms and details of the bonds and authorizing certain other documents and actions in connection therewith. Madam Chair, that is all the bills.
Thank you very much. Let's move on to perfection.
Yes, ma'am, Chair. Under perfection of bills, Bill number 20, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold Bill number 20.
Bill number 20 is held.
Bill number 32, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move to hold Bill number 32.
Bill number 32 is held.
Bill number 266, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder.
I move to hold Bill 266.
Bill number 266 is held.
Bill number 267, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Harder.
I move to hold Bill 267.
Bill number 267 is held.
Bill number 302, introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway and Walton Gray.
I move to hold Bill number 302.
Bill number 302 is held.
Moving on to Bill number 1, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 1.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 1 is perfected.
Bill number 2, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill 2.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Bill number 2 is perfected.
Bill number 3, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill 3.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill number 3 is perfected.
Bill number 4, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill 4.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Bill number Bill number 4 is perfected. I believe Councilman Harder, that was an aye. Think it came in a little late. Can you verify, Madam, Madam Clerk?
Yes, I believe it was. It just came in late.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Bill number 5, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill 5.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 5 is perfected.
Bill number 6, introduced by Councilmember Days.
I move to perfect Bill number 6.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Bill number 6 is perfected.
Bill number 7, introduced by Councilmembers Days and Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill number 7.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposition? Motion carries. Bill number 7 is perfected.
Bill number 8, introduced by Councilmember Days.
Please hold Bill number 8. And Bill number 8 is held. Moving on to final passage.
Bill number 320, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold Bill number 320.
Bill number 320 is held.
Bill number 14, introduced by Councilmembers Trachis, Days, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Clancy, and Harder.
Move to hold Bill number 14.
Bill number 14 is held.
Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 76, introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway and Harder.
I move to hold substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 76.
Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill, uh, number 76 is held.
Bill number 202, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Um, I move to hold Bill number 202.
Bill number 202 is held. Thank you.
Bill number 220, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Move to hold Bill number 220.
Bill number 220 is held.
Bill number 317, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill 317.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 317, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 317 is finally passed.
Bill number 318, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill 318.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 318, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 318 is finally passed.
Bill number 319, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
I move for final passage of Bill 319. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 319, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 319 is finally passed.
Bill number 320, introduced by Councilmember Clancy. Madam Chair, we have a substitute bill.
Please read the substitute.
Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 320, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance authorizing the County Executive to execute a contract and up to two renewals with staff today incorporated for clinician staffing services for the Department of Public Health.
Councilwoman Clancy?
Yes, um, I move for adoption of substitute Bill number 1 for Bill 320.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 The substitute has been adopted?
Um, I'd like to also move for adopt, or for final passage of substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 320.
Is there a second? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Webb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 320, there are seven ayes. I'm sorry, pardon me. On substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 320, there are seven ayes.
Substitute, substitute number 1 for Bill number 320 is finally passed.
Moving on to Bill number 321. Madam Chair, we have a substitute bill.
Please read the substitute.
Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 321, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, Substitute Bill number one for Bill number 321 introduced by Council member Clancy. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract and up to two renewals with Premier Medical Staffing Services LLC for clinician staffing services for the Department of Public Health.
I move for adoption of substitute Bill number one for Bill number 321.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, no? Substitute has been adopted. Assistant woman Clancy?
I'm, uh, I move for final passage of substitute Bill number one for Bill number 321.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Council member Days.
Aye.
Council member Dunaway.
Aye.
Council member Fitch.
Aye.
Council member Webb.
Aye.
Council member Clancy.
Aye.
Council member Tracus.
Aye.
Council member Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on substitute Bill number one for Bill number 321, there are seven ayes.
Substitute Bill, uh, Bill number one for Bill number 321 is finally passed.
Bill number 322 introduced by Council member Tracus.
Move for final passage of Bill number 322.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Council member Days.
Aye.
Council member Dunaway.
Aye.
Council member Fitch.
Aye.
Council member Webb.
Aye.
Council member Clancy.
Aye.
Council member Tracus.
Aye.
Council member Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 322, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 322 is finally passed.
Bill number 323 introduced by Council member Harder.
I move for final passage of Bill number 323. Second.
Roll call, please.
Council member Days.
Aye.
Council member Dunaway.
Aye.
Council member Fitch.
Aye.
Council member Webb.
Aye.
Council member Clancy.
Aye.
Council member Tracus.
Aye.
Council member Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 323, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 323 is finally passed.
Bill number 324 introduced by Council member Tracus.
Move for final passage of Bill number 324.
Second.
Is there a sec- Please call the roll.
Council member Days.
Aye.
Council member Dunaway.
Aye.
Council member Fitch.
Aye.
Council member Webb.
Aye.
Council member Clancy.
Aye.
Council member Tracus.
Aye.
Council member Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 324, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 324 is finally passed.
Bill number 325 introduced by Council member Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill number 325.
Second.
Please call the roll. Thank you.
Council member Days.
Aye.
Council member Dunaway.
Aye.
Council member Fitch.
Aye.
Council member Webb.
Aye.
Council member Clancy.
Aye.
Council member Tracus.
Aye.
Council member Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill number 324, there are seven ayes.
Is that 324 or 325?
Did I say 324? I meant 325, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Bill number 325 has, uh, seven ayes.
Bill number 325 is finally passed. Moving on to resolutions.
Madam Chair, we have six resolutions this evening. Resolution number one introduced by Council member Clancy.
Um, please read the resolution.
Yes ma'am. Resolution, whereas Margaret Doyle was born on January 11th, 1921, and has just celebrated her hun- 100th birthday, and whereas Margaret has lived in the same house in Afton for over 50 years, many of those with her late husband Jim. And whereas Margaret is a longtime parishioner of St. John Paul II Catholic Church in Afton, and whereas for many years Margaret worked for the Christian Board of Publication in Book Printing and Binding, and whereas Margaret enjoys dancing and going to dances at the Afton Elks Lodge, spending time with friends and caring for animals by feeding birds and volunteering with humane society. And whereas it is appropriate and fitting for the council and all St. Louis Countyans to honor Margaret's remarkable life and lon- longevity, and to wish her many more years of happiness. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section one, the County Council expresses its profound joy for Margaret Doyle having reached the age of 100, and wishes her only the best in what will surely be many more happy years. Section two, the administrative director shall send a certified copy of this resolution to Mrs. Doyle as a permanent token of the council's respect and admiration.
You're on mute.
I move for adoption of resolution number one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Member Days.
Aye.
Council member Dunaway.
Aye.
Council member Fitch.
Aye.
Council member Webb.
Aye.
Council member Clancy.
Aye.
Council member Tracus.
Aye.
Council member Harder.
Aye, and happy birthday.
Madam Chair, on resolution number one, there are seven ayes.
Uh, resolution number one has been approved.
Resolution number two introduced by Council member Clancy.
Please read the resolution.
Yes ma'am. Resolution, whereas the St. Louis County Human Relations Commission, the commission, has established for the purposes of fostering mutual self-respect into further amicable relations among the various segments of the population which together comprise the county, to help preserve the county's good reputation for tolerance and fair play and promote even better relations among its people, to help make it possible for all citizens to develop their talents and abilities without limitation, and to assist the community in the fullest realization of its human resources. And whereas Mr. Robert Cone, Cone began his service to St. Louis County nearly 60 years ago, served as the staff person assigned to the commission from its inception in 1964, and thereafter as a member and longtime chair of the commission from 1969 until two, 2020. And whereas Mr. Cone is also active in the community and served the St. Louis Jewish Light since 1969, is editor in chief and since his semi-retirement is editor in chief emeritus, emeritus, and is a past president of congregation Cher Emmeth and of the Press Club of St. Louis. And whereas Mr. Cone has won numerous awards and accolades for his journalism, community service, and activist, activism, including as media person of the year from the Press Club of St. Louis and the Heschel King Award among many others. And whereas Mr. Cone has earned a long and happy future filled with time with his wife Barbara Berg Cone, their three children and five grandchildren. And whereas it is appropriate and fitting for the council and all St. Louis Countyans to recognize Mr. Robert Cone's decades of devoted service to St. Louis County and our region. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section one, the County Council expresses its deepest gratitude, respect, and admiration for Robert Cone's many years of dedicated service to St. Louis County, and wishes him only the greatest happiness in his full retirement. Section two, the administrative director shall send a certified copy of this resolution to Robert Cone as a permanent token of the council's gratitude, esteem, and admiration.
Thank you Lynn, um, I have had the honor to meet with Mr. Cone several times to discuss the work of the Human Relations Commission. Um, they are an important board and commission here in St. Louis County. We need to be working more closely with them um, as a means to make sure that there is more equity and justice for all here in St. Louis County. And it's an honor to honor him tonight and his long time, long time service to St. Louis County. So congratulations, Mr. Cone, and, and thank you. Um, so with that, I move for adoption of resolution number two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Council member Days.
Aye.
Council member Dunaway.
Aye.
Council member Fitch.
Aye.
Council member Webb.
Aye.
Council member Clancy.
Aye.
Council member Tracus. I'm sorry, did you say aye? I didn't-
He's on mute.
Sorry, aye.
Thank you. Council member Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolution number two, there are seven ayes.
Motion carries, resolution number two is adopted.
Resolution number three introduced by Council member Clancy.
Uh, please read the resolution Lynn.
Yes ma'am. Resolution, whereas on January 6th, 2021, violent insurrectionists assaulted the United States Capitol Building, causing not only damage to the building but lasting trauma to the elected officials, staff, and officers involved. And whereas these actions were part of an unsuccessful attempt to disrupt the constitutionally mandated process to count and certify the votes of the Electoral College and to overturn the results of the 2020 presidential election. And whereas such an attempt thereby desecrates the beacon of our democracy and severely undermines our constitution, our longstanding democratic norms, and the rule of law. And whereas dozens were physically injured during the violent assault, including at least 15 police officers. And whereas five pe- people lost their lives as a result of these actions, including a United States Capitol Police Officer who was killed while defending the Capitol Building and those within. And whereas anyone involved in perpetrating the incursion should be held accountable to the fullest extent of the law. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section one, the St. Louis County Council condemns in the strongest possible terms the violent and profoundly un-American actions of the insurrectionists which have dealt a severe blow to our nation and have undermined the notions of American democracy and peaceful self-governance everywhere, including here in St. Louis County. Section two, the St. Louis County Council commends the actions and statements of Congresswoman Ann Wagner and Congresswoman Cori Bush in support of the Electoral College certification process and in upholding our democratic process.
I move for adoption of resolution number three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Madam- Councilman Tracus?
Thank you. Um, it would be nice to be able to support this resolution. Certainly, the actions that took place in Washington DC on the 6th of January were despicable. However, it was no more despicable than the burning, looting, and murder that took place all across the country, including St. Louis County, this summer. Yet this council did nothing in any way, shape, or form to condemn, condemn those actions. And so, as such, this resolution smacks of duplicity and hypocrisy. I cannot and will not support it, my vote will be no.
Any further discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I would like to be added to this resolution.
Madam Clerk? Thank you. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Council member Days.
Aye.
Council member Dunaway.
Aye.
Council member Fitch.
For the same reasons stated by Councilman Tracus, I vote no.
Council member Webb.
Aye.
Council member Clancy.
Aye.
Council member Tracus.
No.
Council member Harder.
I too, um, want to, uh, condemn the violence in Washington DC. Language, some of the language of this resolution is inflammatory, and I do not agree with it. So, but I will condone the violence, it doesn't, it's not necessary, it didn't, shouldn't have happened. Um, but since we have to vote yes or no, I'm gonna have to vote no.
Madam Chair, on resolution number three, there are-
Please change my, please change my vote, it went in, in error.
Yes sir, your vote's been changed. Madam Chair, on resolution number three, there are four ayes and three noes.
The resolution number three, the motion carries, the resolution is adopted.
Resolution number four introduced by Council member Harder.
Please, resolution number four.
Yes sir.
Yes.
Resolution, whereas-
Please read, resolution number four. Okay.
Yes sir. Whereas vaccines have been identified as a critical tool for battling COVID-19, an essential element of community immunity which is needed to fully restart our economy. And whereas distribution of COVID-19 vaccines is being handled by the federal government in concert with state government and local vaccinators. And whereas the St. Louis County Department of Public Health, DPH, is following federal guidelines with regards to vaccine distribution, including the observance of phases 1A, 1B, 1C, 2, and 3 distribution schedules. And whereas distribution of the vaccine is being done by registered vaccinators through the State of Missouri's, the state, Show Me Vax program. While some conditions must be met to be a registered vaccinator, the state is allowing vaccinators to establish their own mechanism for distribution, such as by walk-in, by appointment, et cetera. And whereas, to date, the state has received 528,800 doses of COVID vaccine and has distributed approximately 36% of these doses to people included in the Phase 1A and the Phase 1B, Tier 1 and Tier 2 categories. And vaccine is not yet available to members of the public who do not fall within one of these defined categories. And whereas eventually additional doses of COVID vaccine will be made available to the state for Phase 2 and 3 rollout, and the general public is included in these phases with certain qualifications. And whereas the distribution of the vaccine bears some resemblance to the initial rollout- to the initial rollout of testing for coronavirus, which was limited by testing supplies and lab capacity and therefore had to be triaged to certain sectors of the population. And the council heard from several community members who were frustrated with these limitations. Now therefore be it resolved by the county council of Saint Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section one, in order to avoid the challenges experienced with Corona testing when it comes to vaccination, the council requests the following. A, that DPH provide to the public either directly or through links to official sources, up-to-date information on COVID-19 vaccine rollout, including, but not limited to, the number of doses that have been provided to the state, how many doses the state has distributed, and which phase of distribution the state is currently in. B, that DPH provide general information to the public about who currently qualifies to receive a vaccine and where they can obtain the vaccine in Saint Louis County from DPH and other local vaccinators. C, that DPH demonstrate to the public that the distribution of the vaccine is being done in a fair and equitable manner. And D, that DPH present to the council the major findings of the ongoing program Local Public Health Initiatives to Increase Vaccine Competence, funded by grant money from National Association of County and City Health Officials and any public-facing materials they have developed as a result of this grant program. Section two, the administrative director shall send copies of this resolution to Dr. Emily Duchette and Spring Schmidt, co-directors of the Saint Louis County Department of Public Health.
I move for adoption of resolution number four.
Second.
Discussion please, Councilwoman.
Discussion?
Yes, I reviewed this resolution this afternoon and picked up the phone and called our Health Department Director, Spring Schmidt, to see what her thoughts were on this resolution. I support the goal to ensure that all Saint Louis County residents and everyone in our region has accurate information and access to the COVID-19 vaccine. However, after my call with Director Schmidt, I believe that this resolution is actually more appropriately directed at Governor Parson and his health director, Dr. Williams. Much of what this resolution calls for is not in our purview. So I think that instead of focusing our energies on flawed resolutions such as these as a council, moving forward, we have an opportunity to collaborate with our Health Department to get our residents the information and the vaccines, and the vaccines they need instead with actions that are within our purview. So I will be voting no.
Further discussion?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to find out from anyone here. Has anyone seen a plan from the Department of Public Health on exactly what this rollout will look like?
I, perhaps the county executive can answer that question? Has there been a plan presented to him? County Executive?
I think we'll have something for public consumption soon. Right now, our energy is focused on getting the vaccines at the arms of everyone who is eligible as soon as possible. But I'm sure that Spring will be able to present that to you when it's ready for, for public consumption. It's certainly fluid, and we're cooperating closely with the State Department of Health and some of our consultants.
Councilwoman Fitch, if I may, Councilwoman Days as well. We get regular updates from our Health Department. They have communicated us that they receive a shipment of vaccines pretty regularly. They got one a couple weeks ago of nine hundred and seventy-five doses. They got another distribution today. They shared via email from, I think, Sarah Daly, I believe. And there is a website that Saint Louis County residents can go to to pre-register. That seems to be working pretty smoothly so far. I know many people who've been able to access that website, myself included, and have been informed about available appointment times.
I appreciate that, but that's not what I was looking for. Been looking for a plan for almost two months now, and we keep hearing we'll have one soon, but we still don't see one. So if tomorrow we get a hundred thousand doses delivered to us, do we have a plan of what we're going to do and how that's going to roll out? That's what I'm asking for.
Any further discussion?
No ma'am.
Yes, Madam Chair, I have another question. Councilman Harder, could you provide some clarification on your definition or elaborate on more equitable? Is that by need or by location?
What would mean? It's by need, and make sure that the population knows what level of the distribution they're at, at the present time, and how to get that to them in the most equitable fashion and/or location. And we ran into this problem early on with testing. Where places in North County were not part of the testing initially, and we gotta make sure that we get this vaccine to everyone in an equitable manner. What that looks like will be up to the Health Department to deliver that plan to us and how they need this to be rolled out. We just need more information, and not so much us, but the population needs accurate information. Because if they don't get accurate information, they will make it up or get wrong sources of information. And I think that's starting to, wrong sources and people's assumptions are starting to permeate through the communication links that are out there now. And that just leads to a lot of anxiety and we panic and a lot of confusion. And we just have to be very clear through the Health Department what the expectations are when it comes to the distribution of this vaccine. That's all I'm asking for, is more communication, front-facing to the population, things that we don't get right now. That's what this resolution is all about.
Thank you, Councilman Harder, for that explanation.
I believe there was a motion and a second. Is that correct?
Yes ma'am.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Nay.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Nay.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolution number four, there are five ayes and two noes.
Motion carries, resolution number four is adopted.
Resolution number five introduced by councilmember Fitch.
Please hold on the order of business.
Hold it.
Resolution number six introduced by councilmember Clancy.
Please read the resolution.
Yes ma'am. Okay. Resolution, authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation bonds and special obligation bonds of Saint Louis...
I'm sorry Lynn, you don't need to read this one. You can stop. I move for adoption of resolution number six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Webb?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolution number six, there are seven ayes.
Motion carries, resolution number six is adopted.
Madam Chair, moving on to unfinished business, we have item number one.
The reappointment of Mr. Ashwin Dundoo will be held on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Thank you. Moving on to new business, we have one prepared order this evening. Order number one in the matter of the request of the records manager for permission to destroy certain books, papers, and records of the Department of Public Health, Division of Environmental Protection.
Madam Chair, I move for the adoption of order number one.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, motion carries. Order number one is adopted. All right, we're to the, any other, any other matters to come before this body?
Madam Chair?
Councilman Fitch?
Madam Chair, we've talked for many months now about returning to the council chambers in Clayton. As we continue to see week after week, we have a problem with this new video way of public comments. There are many people that we hear from every week that they've tried to get in, they couldn't get in. One way to solve that is to get back into the council chambers. So I wanted to have that discussion again to get, see what interest there is from the other council members to move forward with that.
Any discussion?
I think that we need to wait until it is safe to move back into the chambers. I request that everyone please review the memo that was sent by our Health Department Director some months ago about some of the things that we would need to do to make our chamber safe for the public. And we also need to consider the safety of our staff members and of each other. Those of us on the dais cannot wear a mask when we are, when we are conducting our meetings, which places us at a higher risk. Additionally, we will be undergoing some changes in our chambers soon. I've been working with our administrative director to make some very necessary and overdue changes to make sure that our chamber is accessible to those members of our community who are, who have disabilities. So we're gonna need to plan around that as well, too. We thought it would be a good time to get that underway while we are not meeting in our chambers. So I think we definitely need further discussion on this topic. I do look forward to the day that we can all be together again in the chamber. But again, we need to prioritize public health and safety.
Councilman Fitch, I am in somewhat agreement with you in that we have had major difficulties in having folks to be able to access us. We don't have nearly the numbers of people that want to participate in the process that have been. I would suggest, and I'm hoping that we can eventually get back to in-person visits, but in the interim, I would like to suggest that we go back to having some of our people to submit their comments via email, if that is possible. I think there will be an intermediate step that we can take. So if you have the opportunity to do that electronically, you can do that. However, if you do not have that capability, that might be another way to make sure that we have that as well. Further discussion on that?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Yes, I agree with that. I think we need to move in that direction. Stale mating in this discussion is not an option. This technology tonight was horrible. I heard about every third word of this meeting. And I don't know if it's on my end, or on your end, or the internet's end. But, you know, we heard, we didn't hear a lot of what could have been heard tonight. And I think we gotta move forward with better technology and a better meeting arrangement if we're going to serve the community at large. So I'm all in favor of doing something. What we're doing is acceptable.
Thank you very much, Councilman Harder. You and I will get together and we will look at how we can make those kinds of revisions. Except will be an intermediate step that we can take to ensure the participants that want to participate can do that.
Almost.
Any other discussion? Anything to come before the body at this particular time? Thank you very much. I will need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
So moved.
Thank you very much. All in favor, please say aye.
Second.
Aye.
Those opposed, please. Very much. Have a good evening and stay safe.